To the October twentieth meeting of the Clark County Board of Commissioners. Vice Chairman Mansfield, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our invocation will be led by Pastor DJ Hunt. DJ, welcome.
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, it is an honor and a privilege, Lord, to stand here today and to pray on behalf of our county. Father Lord, we thank you, Lord, for such a wonderful county and the blessings that you bestowed upon it. Father Lord, tonight, we ask you, Lord, that you'll just step down in the midst of this meeting. Lord, just have your way, God. Lord, go before us. Lord, we ask you, Lord, that you'll just plant a hedge of protection around us, keep us safe in the days ahead. And, Lord, we do love you. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for everything that you're doing, what we can and cannot see. Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, DJ. If everyone will, please silence their cell phones and electronic devices. And I'll read the conflict of interest statement. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or the appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming forward this board this evening? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in a particular matter.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
All right. Vice Chairman Mansfield has a motion to adopt the agenda. Seconded by Commissioner Moore. All in favor? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Moore.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quinn. All in favor? All right. Next, we have public comment. We've got a full house tonight. Got a lot of people signed up. If you're going to be speaking about the three rezonings we have tonight, that'll be at, we'll have a separate public comment for those. So anyone who wants to speak on just general topics will do that now. So I'm assuming, Ms. Bryant, you're on the rezoning request, right? Next, Mr. Rick Goff.
I've been working with the city of Morehead, and they've come up with an ADA transition plan. I've been asking this board, where's your ADA transition plan? In order to get federal funding, you have to have this plan. It's a self-evaluation of all your different departments and procedures. I would like to give you this plan to look at, to see what we got to do to get the county in compliance to all the ADA issues. And, you know, I understand everybody here wants to do the right thing, but you have to have a plan and a coordinator. And I have had talked to Mr. Dwayne here tonight, understanding that he's going to be the coordinator. Right? That's, y'all didn't even know that, did you? So we're all in the learning process here, and hopefully we can make this happen. So you know we got to have a transition plan, right? Here, let me get, here, you take it. Can you give it to me? That's Morehead's plan. Took two years to get that to where it's at, and it's a living document. So if you acquire property or you're building something, you're building, people will do the right thing, of course, but they have to know how to, like, re-modify places or what it makes to make it work. Like in your parks, you know, what they have to do in maintenance and everything like that. It's a plan of self-evaluation, and before you get federal funding, you're supposed to turn that plan in. That might be why we got held up in some of our FEMA issues, getting money, because you don't have all the requirements to get that funding, you know what I'm saying? So, anyway, I'm gonna give that to you, and I hope we get something going with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rick.
I know you asked me what, Thursday night, you asked me, what do you got to do, I said, well, I'm bringing you the plan, so.
We appreciate it. Next, it looks like we have Brian Nicolo.
Good evening. I'm Brian Nicolo at fourteen oh two Salter Path Road. I'm coming here tonight to talk on a general topic, but before I start, I want to first thank the Sheriff's Office, the town of Beaufort Police Department, and the county staff for helping their citizens exercise their free speech rights safely. I would like to say, you know, there's a lot of, still a lot of emotion surrounding the death of Charlie Kirk. Many of the people around the world held vigils to include a recent gathering, remember, in remembrance of Charlie Kirk Day. Our first vigil, we had over four hundred people here, right here on the county courthouse steps. It was an amazing inspirational experience where children from as young as thirteen spoke to over seventy, sharing their thoughts of how their, the impact of Charlie Kirk's life and legacy impacted them. Most recently, here just Friday, this past Friday, we had another gathering, gathering a little smaller, but we had a young girl, eleven years old, speak, and it was very impactful. And she shared that her father was among the twenty-two veteran suicides daily, and it's a shame to hear that, that's heart-wrenching, but also she shared that she was very aware of the life and legacy of Charlie Kirk. She shared the comments she has encountered at school, and it was heartbreaking to hear of her confusion as to why people would celebrate Charlie Kirk's assassination. Our children deserve better from us on all sides of these issues. I also want to share the following. I watched a video clip, and sometimes we get caught up on our social media, and I watched this video clip, and it was kind of an experiment with a independent journalist. She was a conservative, and she walked across and got this one gentleman to come across to the conservative side of the protest. You know, you got protest and counter-protest. He was hesitant to do it because he didn't think it would be accepted. But he walked across and he received acceptance and praise for his effort to come across the line. She walked across the other side of the line to the other side and was met with vitriol, hate, calls of racism, fascist. These are the things. The two sides are not the same. We need to do better. I can also attest to the backlash. I posted, when I posted, I don't have a wide reach, but I went ahead and posted on Facebook, you know, we're gonna have a gathering here. And the vitriol from our, and I don't think all these people, when you get on Facebook community pages, not everybody's from your community. They're from off, and so I'd hate to think somebody in our community would call us racist and fascist because we're, we think a certain way. So, yes, so I see the vitriol. I see the hate. Again, we need to do better. We see that. We had in most recent days the No Kings Rally, and I just want to make sure we understand, over near three hundred million dollars was sponsored for that rally, and organizations like Arabella, Buffett, Ford, Rockefeller, Soros, and Tides Foundation sponsored that. And I want to say that, oops, pardon me, I'll wrap it up here. We're gonna have another gathering. Our citizens talked, we're gonna talk each month, and our next gathering is gonna be fourteen November at six PM, right here on the courthouse steps. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next, we have Travis Klondike.
Hello, thank you. My name is Travis Klondike. I serve as the Associate Director of the NC State University Coastal Dynamics Design Lab. We're a small technical assistance initiative out of the College of Design. We operate through grant funds to offer technical assistance to communities at no cost. We've been working in communities across the state since 2013, predominantly after Hurricanes Matthew, Florence, and Hurricane Helene most recently. I've been working with Lighthouse Environment Partners and the North Carolina Coastal Federation and Carteret County for the past six months or so to scope and develop resilience building projects in unincorporated parts of Carteret County. I'm here today seeking county staff support to proceed with the application process with nine residential elevations in Carteret County. The target grant program here is the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. This specific grant program we are targeting is one hundred percent funded through either FEMA or the state of North Carolina, so there'd be no cost incurred from Carteret County. We will continue to work with Carteret County staff in order to develop the grant application material to submit the application by the end of October so that the homeowners can be eligible to apply for elevation of their properties. If awarded, the state of North Carolina will operate a state-centric administration of this grant program so that all of the procurement of vendors and reimbursement requests will be submitted through the state. So again, it'll be at no cost to the county itself. But again, I'm here tonight seeking county support to work with staff to proceed the application process, and that's all. Thank you.
All right. All right, next, we have a public hearing for the proposal to consider a request to rezone four point two five acre parcel on Morse Road in Swansboro from Rural Agricultural District to MC Plan Mobile Home District. Mr. Rat, Matt Renaud. Interim Planning Director, Assistant County Manager, and many other things. Thank you for all you do, Matt.
My pleasure, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, this first public hearing is for, man, I should not eat dinner so close to dinner, or to this time, my apologies, is for a four point two five acre parcel located on Morse Road, which is a private road in the Swansboro zip code, and the request is to rezone it from its current zoning of Rural Agricultural District to Plan Mobile Home District. This application is by Tidewater Associates on behalf of the property owner, Joyce D. Morse. Currently, the parcel is vacant. The subject property is bordered by a mobile home community to the south and west, open field to the east, and vacant wooded parcel to the north. The subject property is bordered by MC zoning on all sides, which is approximately thirty-six acres, and nearby there are R fifteen M and R twenty zone properties. The subject property is situated within the Limited Transition Camel Land Use Plan classification, which this encourages increasing development during the next five to ten years. At its meeting on September eighth, the Planning Commission voted six to zero. I apologize for that error in the staff report, but it's six to zero to unanimously recommend approving the proposed rezoning. Twenty-two property owners have been notified about this, and we do have some maps on here. So highlighted in red is the subject property. This is just a general aerial. This shows the various zoning districts around it, so as you see, it is already surrounded by MC zoning. However, there is R twenty and R fifteen M nearby. And happy to answer any questions you have before or after the public hearing.
Okay. I want to adjourn and motion to go into a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Clark. All in favor? All right, we are now in public hearing. Is there anyone out there who would like to speak on this matter? Howard, do we have anybody in the other room? Howard, will you check, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Josh Edmondson, Tidewater Associates. Here on behalf of the property owner. We did submit the application to rezone. We are seeking to do a potential development, and the Plan Mobile Home District is a desirable category, as that is it's surrounded thirty-six acres. This four point two acres will be combined with the larger parcel. So we wanted to seek to rezone it first to avoid any split zoning, even if it was for a short period of time. And again, this would just allow consistent development over the entire thirty-six acres as far as zoning goes. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you, that you may have at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, sir. If you will come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Michael J. Mooney. I live at one forty Morse Road. I'm the first horse farm on the right when you pull down the road. I asked at the last meeting about, I believe it was that gentleman, if they had an idea of how many units, what they're trying to get in here, and they said they couldn't tell me because there's too many other things going on. I understand they have to draw up their plans once it goes into the zoning, then, then you all get to look at it. The main question I have is, has to do with the number, but it has to do with safety, too. How many of all ever been down? Do you know the road we're talking about? Has there been down that road? It's a single-lane dirt road, okay? During Florence, it was closed for almost eight days, all right, before they got an opening in there. And numerous times before that, it was closed just from heavy thunderstorms. It's a single-lane dirt road. The fire truck had to park in front of my house because I'm at the end, because if something would happen, there's, there's no way of getting down there. It's just, it was impossible. They couldn't get in it. So I think you really have to take that into consideration. I have no complaint against them expanding the trailer park, but it's gonna create, what I gotta need to know is how many vehicles were talking on a single-lane dirt road? I tried to look at some of the things that's on the county muni thing as far as specs and all that stuff, and I'm not an engineer, so I'm really kind of lost in all that. But, so my main complaint would be the amount of traffic, the safety concerns, and just in the last three years, I've had to go, two more, two horses now are on steroids because of the dust it's being raised, and the vet told me it's strictly from the dust coming off the road. So if they're not gonna put a paved road in, you know, I'll fight this thing tooth and nail. You know, if they're gonna expand and do the right, that's fine, but if they're just gonna build, widen out the road a little bit and put some rock here and there, would increase the traffic. And plus, I see that there's gonna be a commercial variance. I guess that's coming up later. They want to change the zoning to commercial, so they're gonna have a commercial building there? That's a different. Oh, it's not? I thought it was on, on my map here. Okay, so they're not gonna do the commercial part there? Oh, great. Thank you. That's great. All right, so that's my only concern, is, is one, safety, and the amount of traffic that's gonna go down a single lane. I don't know what the rules and regulations are as far as numbers and, you know, and all that. And I can understand that they don't really know until they get their plan and you all look at it. And, but please consider that in your consideration that, you know, there's not a lot of people live on that road, but we all live there because we want a peace and quiet, and was always, maybe six or seven people lived there all year round. On the weekends, it would get a little crowded, but pretty much everybody's in check, you know, and it's pretty good. And they've really cleaned it up. I, you know, I have to say, they, they cleaned it up pretty good. It looks good. But if they're not gonna do something with their road, I don't see how you can expand anything. It's at its max now. Plus, they built two new homes in the Godfrey Branch section. There's gonna be another one going up, and there's, in the future, because I know it's because of my neighbor, he's gonna, his granddaughter's gonna build a parcel on a house right off that road. So, you know, it's, it's gonna grow, but please, whatever you gotta do to make the road safe, that's, that's my main thing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is the gentleman from Tidewater leave, or is he? Matt, what, Morse Road goes out to Silver Creek?
It ends up, I remember being on West Fire Tower Road.
And what control do we have over upgrading that road?
So it's currently a private road, which falls under multiple ownership. Before, if the rezoning is approved for this or the next case, to actually develop it as a mobile home park, it has to follow the rules in Appendix A, I believe it is, of our, of our ordinances, which requires the review after they design their plan, goes through the TRC and goes through those methods. So that's when the other agencies would really be able to weigh in, if the rezoning is approved.
So would they put a state-approved type road system in there, or would somebody speak to that?
So at this time, and I'm going off of memory, I believe it's a eighteen-foot-wide travelway. The gentleman is correct. There are several sections of the road that are not eighteen-foot wide now. So we would be upgrading, we would have to upgrade this entire path to eighteen-foot wide. And I believe it requires the, to be, I think it requires the minimum NC DOT base standards. So it does not have to be paved, but it does have to have
All-weather travel surface.
At least six, I think it's six inch of base, if I'm not mistaken, which should help cut down on the dust some. But actually, it should help be an improvement to everybody who uses this path, not just people in the back, but also the people up front who access this via thirty-foot, twenty-foot access even that runs on the property. So we would be upgrading, yes, sir.
I think our rules require it to be twenty feet wide.
It could be, that's right, yes, sir. But it would be, it would be either eighteen or twenty, whatever it says, yes, sir.
And that would come back to us before?
Then once the zoning change is even complete, you're gonna have to do state stormwater, and you're gonna have to do something for wastewater.
Yeah, so there's still a lot of steps through the process. And as part of the TRC, I mean, DOT will get a copy of this, Fire Marshal's Office, all them will be able to weigh in.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Hear none, say none. Is there a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. All in favor? All right, that passes. Is there a motion to approve or deny the request?
I make a motion to approve the request to rezone from the rural agriculture to the MC mobile home community.
Okay. Is there a second?
No second.
All right, any discussion? All right, motion by Commissioner Clark, seconded by Commissioner Waldrop. All in favor? All right, that carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the statement of plan consistency and reasonableness.
Would you like to read that for us, Matt?
Yes, sir. So the Planning Commission's recommendation for this was, granting the rezoning request will make the property consistent with the neighboring and surrounding properties, and they believe it is reasonable and in the public interest because it supplies affordable housing for the county residents and is consistent with the surrounding area.
Okay. We had a vote to approve that?
Yes.
There a motion?
That's one's on motion.
Seconded, seconded by a motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Shin. All in favor? Next, we have another public hearing. Proposal to consider request to rezone zero point eight acre parcel on Morse Road from R twenty to MC Mobile Home District.
Good evening again. So this is a related case. The request is from Tidewater Associates on behalf of the owner, Oak Escapes LLC, to rezone a point ten, eight, point eight tenths of an acre, sorry, parcel located on Morse Road from R twenty single-family to MC Plan Mobile Home District. Currently, the parcel is open field with a dilapidated single-family structure. Subject property is bordered by a mobile home community to the southeast and west, and a vacant wooded parcel to the north. The property is bordered by MC zoning to the southeast and west of approximately thirty-six acres, and RA zone property to the north. This eight tenths of an acre is actually part of the thirty-six acre parcel that you can see on here, and unfortunately, it's just one of those leftover split zoned from many, many years ago. Like the previous rezoning request, this property is situated in the Limited Transition Camel Land Use Plan classification, which encourages increasing development during the next five to ten years. At the meeting on September eighth, the Planning Commission voted six to zero to unanimously recommend approving the proposed rezoning. Forty-one property owners have been notified about this. Happy to answer any questions now or after.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into a public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield. Seconded by Commissioner Moore. All in favor? We are now in public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this matter? I forgot to mention you'd have three minutes to speak, but try to be as close to it as you can.
I'm sorry. Just to kind of go back to the road and what that gentleman said, I purchased three truckloads from, they'll be paged of rock to put down, and then they come around and they spread it, they keep the graded, the rock disappears. And I'm telling you, when it rains, in fact, is my neighbor, who's a police officer, when he was on duty one time, we had a heavy thunderstorm. Someone from the trailer park was come up, got stuck, then drove on his front yard, got stuck. I mean, unless they pave that road, it's, it's not gonna work. It's too hilly, too runny, there's, everything runs, I'm at the high end, but it all runs to the road. So I don't, I know what he said about the state, but I don't know what y'all could do, but you gotta have some common sense. But you got to have some common sense. I mean, we're getting hit with storms and everything else. And I'm telling you, the fire truck's sitting in front of my house because they could not get down the road. Y'all got to think about that. What would you do? How would you get, how would you get, if you had a fire, what would you do? You'd have to go in by boat and run pumps and stuff? You got to have a decent, it's got to be a real road. And I have no problem. But if you're just going to, you know, spread some rock and dirt here, it's just a matter of time. And, you know, I don't know if you noticed the traffic on, or into town, but there was an accident about two months ago, it was in the summer, right at Taylor Notion in 58, good old 58. Van flipped upside down, car hit it. The traffic was stopped for 30 minutes, and you couldn't go anywhere. 24 was shut down at the light, it was shut down at Taylor Notion Road, and you couldn't get anywhere. You know, I understand about growth, I really do. But we got one road out there. One road, one two lane. The state's been talking for years about changing intersections, doing this, doing that. That's a safety issue. I know, you might hear that all the time everywhere else, but man, you know, you go to pull out on a Pelletier Loop Road out on 58 Saturday morning, it's getting to be a chore, you know? The same thing with dumps. And now you're going to have all these people going down the dump road. It's something that, it's really got to need to be looked at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Josh Evans, I'm Tidewater Associates. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. I think that as we get further along in the process, we can definitely better answer a lot of concerns from any residents out there as we get further along in design. But again, happy to answer any questions you guys may have. Thank you.
Well, you're going to have to build, the Fire Marshal's going to make you build a road up to an all-weather surface
Correct.
20 feet wide, and you're going to have probably a 70-foot turning radius for the fire trucks to turn around.
Correct.
So there is a lot of hoops left to jump that the Fire Marshal and the technical review committee and all them will have to get in once that, once they get to that stage. This is just the first stage, but
That's correct.
Those are all valid concerns, and if I lived down that road, I'd have the same concerns, so.
And Fire Marshal may make us upgrade past 20 feet, we don't know. So keep that in mind as well.
I can guarantee you, it'll be 20.
But that's the easiest problem you have to deal with. I'll go back to the stormwater and the wastewater
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Are the key factors.
That's right.
And they're not any part of this hearing right now or the road.
That's right.
This is just a rezoning request.
That's right, yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? There's a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Waldrop. All in favor? We are now out of public hearing. Is there a motion to approve or deny the rezoning request?
Motion to approve the request to rezone the point acre parcel located at Morse Road, Swansboro, North Carolina. Currently a zip code of Swansboro, 28584. Hopefully be changed in the near future. PIN number 536602665106000 from R-20 Single Family Residential District to MC Plan Mobile Home District.
Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Waldrop. All in favor? Carries. Do you like to make a motion to approve the plan consistency?
Motion to approve the statement of plan consistency and reasonableness. If you could read that out for the record again.
Absolutely. So the planning commission's recommendation for this was, it rectifies the split zoning of the parcel, and it is reasonable and in the public interest because being surrounded by MC, it makes the whole parcel consistent. Yes, and makes the whole parcel consistent.
All right, motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Waldrop. All in favor? Next, we have a public hearing for the proposal to consider a request to subdivide a parcel into two tracks. Rezone track two, 3.556 acres from R-15 Single Family Residential District to B1 Conditional Use zoning district. Matt Renaud.
Thank you again, sir. So this rezoning request, or this public hearing is, as you mentioned, a request to subdivide a 6.157 acre parcel located at 229 Pete Road in Newport. And then, once it is two tracks, to rezone one of the tracks. Mr. Bryant Jr. is requesting the subdivision into two tracks, and then rezone the north parcel, which will be approximately 2.6, I'm sorry, 3.556 acres from R-15M to B1 Conditional zoning. The remaining parcel, which will be the southern parcel, will stay as R-15M under this proposal. The property owner has proposed the following conditions for B1 Conditional zoning, that is the operation of a landscaping business, and associated contractor's storage yard to support the landscaping business, and office to support the landscaping business. In addition, if the parcel, if this subdivision rezoning is approved, the B1 CZ zone parcel will have to do buffering like is required per our code when there's commercial zone property, and that's the residential. Currently, the parcel includes a single-family structure on the southern end and a storage facility and storage yard for a landscaping business. The subject property is bordered by single-family homes to the south and east, and industrial property to the north, and vacant wooded parcel to the west. The subject property is bordered by R-15M zoning to the southeast and west, and industrial and wholesale district zone property to the north, as you can see on the map. The subject property is situated within the limited transition Camel Land Use Plan classification, which encourages development during the next five to 10 years. At its meeting on September 8th, the planning commission voted five to one to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning and subdivision. Thirty-four property owners have been notified, and I know the applicant among others are in the audience if you have any questions for staff or others.
Could you state what the conditions are when you
Sure, sorry, I kind of ran through that fast.
Change from R-15 to a conditional use?
So the conditions that would be placed if this was approved, and this is on behalf of the applicant, he is placing that only operation of a landscaping business, contractor's storage yard to support the landscaping business, and an office to support the landscaping business. So no other type of businesses would be allowed if the rezoning is approved.
Just like with the others, we have to go into a public hearing. And I see we have a packed house, and I think there's some folks in the other room as well. So is there a motion to go in a public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Waldrop, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. All in favor? Okay. If anyone who would like to speak, I don't know if you have a particular order you want to go in, but you will have three minutes. If you will state your name and address for the record. Judging by the large crowd we got, if you
Mr. Chairman.
Don't be repetitive, give us some new content, so.
Mr. Chairman, that's the attorney representing one of the people, he shouldn't be allowed more than three minutes to speak.
Right.
We're fine with that.
I'm Michael Lincoln out of Emerald Isle, I represent Dana Tucker, who's opposed to this rezoning. And her father, Mr. Lewis, would like to speak to some possible conflicts that the board may have. Mr. Lewis?
You have three next door? All right. Do we have any of our staff, excuse me, Mr. Buddy, do we have any of our staff that might sit next door, so those three people that are here for this rezoning can maybe sit in the room there?
Go ahead, sir.
All right, we're asking that Chris Chadwick and David Quinn, recuse yourself from this because your nephew works with Donnie?
Cousin.
Cousin works with Donnie, and you're friends with Donnie, I know. And you need to recuse yourself from the vote and everything on this.
I hear what you're saying, but
Madam Attorney?
So it's only a conflict of interest if it has a direct financial impact on their household. It is not a conflict of interest if you're friends with somebody or if a relative that's not in the household is involved.
Talking about, oh, oh, you're talking about the road and everything with Donnie taking care of it. Well, really, that road was paved up front by the office. It was about four inches thick. It was thick enough to hold a truck. When you passed the Rouse's office on down to the end, it was, not quite to the end, by Billy's house, where it takes the left turn, it was paved down that way, but it weren't as thick because it was for automobiles, not heavy trucks. And heavy trucks have tore the road up. Where you go down there now, that's where you see all the holes. Donnie filled it in, but they cost it. They should have filled it in. But anyway, I'm opposed to the rezoning. Also, I want you to remember that when you took an oath, you swore in the Bible to obey the law. And so far, Donnie, he's the one that went through the whole process backwards. Built his building, done everything, and then he comes and asks for permission. And no consideration at all for Dana. And I know that you have addressed one of, if that Tucker woman was still causing a lot of trouble down there. She's the only innocent one in the whole bunch. All she'd done was have her property surveyed to find out where her property line was. They found out that Donnie was 30 feet over on hers. They got a GSI map of where he's dug the hole on her property to get dirt out of it and sold it. And it's, you know, you say what you want to, it ain't right. But anyway, I was reading the other morning, and it just happened to hit down 1 Timothy, chapter one, verses eight and nine, "But we know that the law is good if a man uses it lawfully." Verse nine says, "Knowing this, that the law is not made for a righteous man, but for the lawless and disobedient." And then, chapter 3, 15, "The law, the pillar and ground of the truth." Psalms 11, 3, "At the foundation be destroyed," what can the righteous do? So you can say favoritism and pass it, or you can do it by the law, you're going to have to reject it. And if you reject it, all the people that you have rejected before are going to come back to you. It's going to come back on you. But anyway, I guess my three minutes is up, but I have a lot of stuff to say, but I'll give somebody else opportunity to go from there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
My name's Katie Metten. I own a home a couple houses down on 192 Pete Road with James O'Versey, and we don't have a problem with any rezoning or continuing his business.
So you're in favor of it?
Yes.
And what's your address?
192 Pete Road.
Anyone else?
Donnie Bryant, 229, the property that we're talking about. This family land, it's my thing my granddad bought in 1975. I have many things to mention. I did do, put my building there, into business there, or, you know, slowly moved some things there, not knowing that it needed to have a special rezoning. And I've been called a liar, that I had to know that. We've always worked and lived on this tract of land, I believe it all totals 48 acres. I truly never thought about it until I got the letter. You know, Dana was unhappy with some things, and I got two letters. And, you know, I've worked with the county, followed in their lead, filled out the application. I wish, I wish I would have done it early on, had I known that that's what I needed. You know, it's, our family is super divided now. There was already some tension and some other issues. But it's killing me, it's affected the whole entire family. All I want to do is what I've been doing, no bigger, I'm over halfway through my career. Everybody on the road, I think they're all here tonight, there might be one fellow, he didn't make it, but he's talked to y'all. Mr. Cooper. He's, everybody is fine with it. Dana told me her main complaint, and it was survey, the line wasn't where we thought it was. And I did have some things over the line. I immediately moved them with the survey and stakes. And I left something too close to, you know, it was right on the property line, because I, you know, I did kind of lose some land that I thought was mine, but it wasn't. And I'm in agreement with the survey. I'm going, I'm moving what was the initial issue. I've had trucks on that road for many years, along with Rouse's set the tank, that has many more heavy dump trucks than myself. I do get some deliveries, there's an occasional tractor-trailer that will come down the road. And half the time, they're from up north, it's decorative stone. And, you know, they don't know where they're at. We, most of the time, would escort them down, down the road, so of course, the driving's slow. And there are a few other deliveries we get. I seen a FedEx truck come in just the other day. He was much more dangerous than anything that's ever went to my property. So I want to get this right, do the screening, do whatever I need to do to continue this family business. Because it is my livelihood, and I don't know what I'd do if I can't operate there. So please work with me on making this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Is there anyone else?
May I hand y'all something before my time begins? It's just one, one page.
Just bring it to the clerk, if you would. The clerk will distribute it.
And also, may I ask that this be zoomed out just a tad? My name is Dana Tucker. I live at 165 Pete Road, and I live next door to Bryant and Turf and Landscape. Since March 2025, I have personally met with Donnie several times, expressing the impact his business has had on me and my family, and directly asked him to consider alternate routes and move rock piles further from the property line. I've tried to find a compromise privately, but unfortunately, he's been unwilling to agree to any of the changes, and that's why we are here. I do ask that the rezoning be denied. I believe commercial and industrial activity doesn't belong this close to residential homes. The ones in favor of this proposal are not living directly beside this activity, or they work for Rouse's. There's a reason homes are far away from the Rouse's business, with the exception of my grandfather's own home at the time. He respected his family. Although we live on private land, it isn't the Wild West, where you can do whatever you want without regard to how it affects others. The zoning laws are meant to protect citizens from these things. However, I know there's a possibility you may decide to allow it to continue anyway. If so, I'm requesting reasonable conditions that would help protect my home and make the situation more tolerable, and these be written into the conditions of approval. This will take money and time on Donnie's part. I'm a Cargate County school teacher making $50,000 a year, so I understand the hardship of money. It would be my life that is ruined if this business continues the way that it has been, and it has grown exponentially since he had a truck and a trailer. Donnie would just need Donnie would just need to make some adjustments. If he cares about family as expressed, he will go above and beyond the minimum requirements to keep peace and well being. First first and most critically, I am asking that a new easement be used for all business traffic and access separate from the residential access. That would help keep the heavy equipment noise and congestion away from the homes, making it much safer. And I'm referring to the one that goes between my parcels of land, which is right here is my part. This is my home, and these are my two parcels that I had so divided for my children. If this cannot be met, the rezoning should be not be denied completely. Second, move piles of rock and stone, so it's not beside the residential property where large trucks ro- load and un-roadlock rock, sorry, causing major noise. And they are loading and unloading right here. Third, materials kept on the property should be only for his landscaping jobs, not stockpiled or sold to other landscapers or the public. Fourth, deliveries should be limited to eight AM to six PM Monday through Saturday. Fourth, limit truck size to no more than six axles. Uh, we've seen eighteen-wheelers and large dump trucks hauling concrete and debris to be crushed on site, and that creates a lot of noise. Fifth, I'm requesting a six-foot privacy fence in addition to a fifteen-foot vegetated buffer with evergreens, at least five feet tall planting. And then sixth, signage to the new access, and I would ask these conditions be a priority, completed within a hundred and twenty days. I'm simply asking for fairness for the same respect and peace that every homeowner deserves. Thank you for your time and for the work you do to look out for our community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Let me speak. Again, Michael Lincoln, Emerald Isle. I'm just gonna follow up on what Ms. Tucker said. What she's talking about is the preferred route, if it can be done. I know that Mr. Bryant's cousin, Billy, has this property here. I don't know who has this, but there's obviously an easement into here. If that easement could be extended to here, then Mr. Bryant could bring his trucks in this way off of Hibbs Road, um, which already has a lot of traffic. What we have here is a unpaved road, and the tractor trailers come in and go across it to his property. And what's going on with the use he's doing is he's actually got an industrial use more than anything else. The landscaping business he's had for a long time, we know that. But in two thousand and eighteen, he got a building permit to build a big commercial building, and in two thousand and nineteen, I believe it was completed. Since then, he's increased his business almost exponentially, and it's creating all kinds of problems. I think that there's been, what, two hundred and eighty tractor trailers and heavy truck dump trucks that have gone across Ms. Tucker's property, which is right here. This is her. I mean, she's right on top of it, and this is a residential area. Yes, you have a sand pit over here, but that's about to close up. I I believe in about a year. Um, and that's, uh, that's owned by, uh, Rouse's, I believe. And, um, what we got here is a situation that this is not compatible. There's no consistency. He built the building before he asked for a rezoning, and it wasn't done properly. I don't even think the right septic tank is out there. I don't know if that matters to the board or not, but what we got here is a commercial slash industrial use right next to a residential area. And I don't believe that the the zone, the county plan of zoning would be, that would be compliant with it. I don't think it's compliant. I don't think it's even close. Um, it's gonna be very disruptive to the residents. Now, those residents that don't mind are not right on top of it like she is. And I believe that you need to take that into consideration, and there's no reason why Mr. Bryant can't spend the money to to create an easement into his property down there off of Hibbs Road. And that's what we're, that's the condition we're asking for tonight. Thank you.
Sir, come on down. State your name and address.
My name is Billy Rouse. Um, I run Rouse's Septane Service and have a few properties in this neighborhood. I'm gonna get my berms right. So the initial proposal they're talking about is coming in through Hibbs Road access. That has a deed to easement only for Rouse's Septane, because that goes through some other people's property. Through Philip Whaley's, there's two properties right here, and even my cousin Johnny owned it. They came and told me I couldn't go through there. But then we got it from Johnny, and then I told the guy, I'm coming through here. So I can't, we can't grant him permission to come out through Hibbs Road. And the other proposal was to send Donnie through here. Right, right through here to Rock Road. He goes through our pit and comes down this way through our pit. So and she's worried about her grandchildren being here, but wants wanted to send all the traffic through here, through the yard of my niece, who has the youngest child in the neighborhood, which is six years old. So it's okay to send all these trucks to a six-year-old's yard, but not by your house. Anyway, I own Rouse's Septi- this building here, and then I own a piece of property. Trying to get my berms right. Right here.
Can we make that any bigger?
And then then this compound here is Rouse's. And, uh, then this pit is Rouse's. And so all these properties, I I'm voting approved. I want to approve it. But, um, this is Kelsey. She's the one with the six-year-old, and this is our access to our pit. I don't see sending all these trucks to a six-year-old's yard is is a is a good idea. I mean, um, I'm sure Kelsey wouldn't mind, but to, um, Dana thinking that's a good idea, there's Lucy is the youngest one in the neighborhood, which is a six-year-old. So, um, I don't really think, I think that's kinda selfish to try to send them to her yard.
What what is the zoning of the pit where the big pond is?
IW, all that's IW right now.
What what's the old pit there, the one that has the water? Is that zone IW?
I'm not sure what is, uh, so everybody, what happened is when my grandma, before she was dying, all this was split up. So this part of it is actually belongs to, uh, Mr. Inman. This part of it actually belongs to me. This part of it belongs to Dana, and this part of it belongs to, uh, Donnie Bryant. And the way all that's brought up is we can't block our, we can all access the water anywhere in the water. But it's just kinda the way they broke it up when they redid the neighborhood. And as far as property lines in the neighborhood, growing up here has never been an issue. Like, nobody knew where any property lines were. Nobody cared. We're all family. And all of a sudden here recently, everybody's worried about property line. I mean, but anyways, my time's up. But, I mean, property lines have never been an issue my whole life.
Matt, do we know what the zoning is where the old pit was?
Do you want on the south end?
Yeah.
Currently, R fifteen M.
Okay.
Tracy Bryant, um, two eight Pete Road. I've lived here since July of twenty twelve. I'm a qualified mental health professional, and I am a regional director for a therapeutic foster care program. I fortunately have the ability to work from home, um, when I'm not traveling. So I'm in the neighborhood three to four days a week. I do not have any concerns for commercial traffic. I come and go as I please. I'm never in fear of a truck on the property or on the road. Um, I am in support of the zoning, rezoning of Mr. Bryant's property to continue to do what has been done since I've been there in twenty twelve. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Can you go back to the map before this? I'll try to work with it if you can. Yeah, um, this is coming into Pete Road here. There's two parts of Pete Road. This is the heavy, um, Diane.
Can we make it a little bigger? Okay.
Yeah, what's your name and where?
I was, I want her to back that.
Yeah, he's got that. We're we're doing good on time, so you can say what you got to say.
Um, Diane Lewis, um, thirty-six twenty Meadow Drive, Morehead. This is coming in the Rouse's here. Um, my pick, this is my parents' property here. My, all of it. Um, Rouse's office is here, and this is my property here. I'm trying to see the house here and this here. So this affects me just as much as anybody coming in. Rouse's started small. They they had all their equipment here. They're fine. Okay, well, I'm trying. My daughter, my daughter, um, is Dana, and Billy that just spoke is my nephew, I mean, his aunt. And Tracy that just spoke, that didn't nothing bother her. She is way down here on this property here. She doesn't even, I mean, it's, she's in the woods, so she wouldn't hear anything anyway. Um, get back at this, uh, like I said, this is my daughter's two pieces of property. And this road here, it has, it says it's a forty-foot easement. It's eleven foot, three inches. So it's not forty foot. Um, and like I said, a business should not be running through residential property. I mean, it's like spots, I mean, I mean, that's, I mean, it's crazy. It's just, it's not makes sense at all. And this, when you said this was, um, IW here, it will, they say, last year, they said it was about ready to close, so it should be finished, and it should be just a pond. Um, but this is, like I said, here, when they said the six-year-old lives here, the other week, she said that she would let her, she's out there with her child. Nothing bothers them, so I don't know why that was brought up. Um, Billy with Rouse's, I have a little interest in Rouse's. And Donnie had been using for his business. I'm not sure where I am here. My piece of property here, this whole piece right here is his equipment right here. He had been using that, and then he started bringing things over here, you know, where he had dug his dirt. But like I said, he's been using this for years with our permission and then my mom's permission before first, and then the, uh, he was just using part. This is Rouse's here. This little partial here was Rouse's until Rouse's put it, then he's the president, he put it in his own name, but that's a different issue. But if this gets approved, he'll do the same thing. I'm sorry, I gotta, I'm getting over an illness. But, um, like I said, I definitely oppose that, cause it's crazy to go down here, and I own like almost seven acres. And like I said, Rouse's, they're out for the day, but if you have a contractor's yard, you'll have more people coming in. And when they say it won't increase, but it does nothing needs to go down a residential property. And the people who got the letters, they're here. They don't know why in the world it's going over here on Pete Road. Telling you what his application was and not why it came up.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hey, Kelsey Holt. I live at the two sixteen Pete Road. I'm the one with the six-year-old. Um, right here, we talked about the easement. That was like when I did get my, what's up? When I didn't get, um, put my house here on this property, it was kinda like with the promise that once this was done, that the trucks would no longer be having to go directly past my house. So it would only be like a short-term live situation there. But again, like I, none of what goes on, I grew up in it. And when you grow up, I don't know, in construction lifestyle, it's it's like a way of life. You become very, you get taught to become very aware of your surroundings, and and same with the people that work. You tend to hire people who are gonna be more mindful people. You have a selective like way of doing things because you know that you're working in within families, you know, neighborhood compounds and things. Anyways, um, I don't feel like they're a danger to my child or us or our well-being or any of that. I feel like they, if anything, are like a really positive thing for my child to look up to and, um, see, you know, what it takes to kinda really take entrepreneur-ing to a new level. Cause when you start with nothing and you, you know, work into something like that, to have it all come crashing down over dry eyes is pretty shitty. So, um, I hope that my daughter learns from Tammy and Donnie all sorts of things, and I hope she can continue to watch them grow, preserve their business, and what it does for our family. Anyways, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Nathan Tucker. I live at four six two five Mill Village Road, Raleigh, North Carolina, but I grew up on one six five Pete Road, um, adjacent to the property in question tonight. Um, when I was younger, I I did, I I biked, I rode go-karts on the road we're talking about right now. This road right here in front of my mom's property. Um, I know what the traffic was then, and I know what it is now, and the nature of that, in my opinion, has changed. The proposal is to rezone this for landscaping business. I don't believe that that's consistent with the actual use of the land. I feel like it is industrial. Um, and there has been a significant change, and that's why we're here tonight. Another reason we're here tonight is my mother Dana, um, has requested, has has talked to Donnie on several occasions and asked that he make accommodations for this work, so that his work can continue without her being disrupted. Um, there there hasn't been any accommodation for that, and, uh, that's why we're here tonight, because, uh, you know, we don't have any other recourse. If there's no combination, if you can't find another access point, if you can't put up a berm, uh, to mitigate noise, then this is kind of our only option. So, uh, while we ask that, you know, the rezoning not go through, if it does, I feel like there's some reasonable accommodations that could be had and, um, a compromise to be made so that everyone can be happy. To the point about, uh, the six-year-old here and this route not being a a good alternative because of that. Currently, the route goes by that adjacent property right now, uh, this road here. This property in question is where the six-year-old lives. And so, uh, to say that by changing the route, it's gonna further endanger, um, you know, those that live there, I don't think that's true. We can find another route in this, uh, in this industrial land or through Hibbs Road that will make everyone happy. Um, and so, you know, we can come to a compromise here. So, uh, I just wanna wanna thank you for your time, and, uh, I appreciate what y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Is there anyone else?
Hello, um, I'm Noah Tucker. I live at one six five Pete Road, right here at the properties in question. I just wanna give you guys kind of a an overview of what this has looked like. So when Donnie started his land, he was over here, um, in my grandparents' property. And since then, his business has grown, so he's currently using two properties. He's using my grandparents' property, which is right here, which a lot of his stuff is stored on. And he's also using his over here. Um, with all this, there is a chance that my grandparents require him to move from that property. And if so, he said himself that that would also increase traffic further. So what we're already dealing with is a lot of traffic and it being a construction industrial zone going by our house we had. It's my brother's birthday the other day. We're singing Happy Birthday, and look back, and there's a backhoe right here on the property, and that's all I can see behind his head sticking up. And there's trucks that go through and say that me or one of my brothers were to build a house on this property here. This property is directly next to where that backhoe was right here, a mere probably fifty or a hundred feet away. And even if you do, you know, put conditions on that or or what have you, that sound is still there. Backhoe backing up is very loud, um, would go through trees or anything like that. And that kind of work is just very loud and dangerous. And i- if I was there and I had kids there, I really just would not want them there. To the IW property in the back, if this, you know, we turn time back, and this was also zoned, this would have likely been zoned IW as well. What the pond looks like right now is what looks like right now is what the back pit will look like in, say, five or ten years, whenever it's done. And they've said it's much shorter than that in the next year or two. So I don't feel like we should add the consideration of the IW property near there as, you know, consideration. Like Kelsey, my cousin, was saying, that the expectation was for that to close and that truck traffic to, to cease through there. And with that, I would just say, please deny the rezoning. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
My name is Snuffy Bryant. I live at one-seventy-three Rousville Lane, and I have worked with the Rousas Septu tank service in nineteen seventy-three. And this, four generations of people have lived, worked, and was raised there. And this was what my father-in-law and mother-in-law bought the land, was, it was for work. And that land has been used for a cow pasture, it was a, an approved sewage dump site, and it was also a pit right there in front, like was been mentioned. And construction is, and there has always been just a way of life there. And from the very beginning, that was what this land was for. And I am in favor of approving the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Is there anyone else?
Hello, my name is Ralph Welch. I live at one-sixteen Hamilton Road, Moorhead City. I'm here tonight to, to oppose the rezoning of two-two-nine Pete Road. The rezoning would be kind of like a reward to turf, to Bryant's turf and landscaping. Donnie's business works in commercial and residential work. And when you're in those arenas, you know the difference, and I've been in them, you know the difference between commercial property and residential property. It, this, this isn't a matter of what the land was and when it was. It's a clear violation of the zoning laws. The building he built is a forty-five-hundred-square-foot building. It wasn't built just to house a tractor or maybe a pickup truck. It was intended to be a warehouse. It was said earlier that something about the septic, I couldn't find a septic permit for that building. So my question comes up is, is what else on the property hasn't been licensed or permitted? The main reason I'm here is, is for setting past precedents. The business is in violation. It was never confirmed, or it was never zoned business. If, if you guys zone it tonight, commercial or approve it, past precedent will be set, and you will have other businesses and other people in the county that have been denied, and they're gonna hear about this, and they're gonna be up here banging on your door. One in particular, Pro Green, down on Stargaze Lane. Sure, they're gonna hear about this. And then what it does start is, if it does, it starts spot zoning around the county. Little pieces of commercial property that kind of like a devalue residential land. In this case, there's one person that takes the beating. That's one-six-five right now, Ms. Tucker, and then her two lots. If there's no win-win situation with the alternate routes, then it's gotta be denied. They just said that the easements would not be allowed to go through. They couldn't do it. That's the condition, the main condition. If it can't, you gotta deny it. And I feel sorry for Mr. Bryant, but he'll just have to move his business to a commercial piece of property, just like anybody else would have to do. I don't know if any of y'all have been out there, but it's four acres. These are not just little bins put up to house enough for one company. These are big, large bins to put dump truck loads of concrete, mulch, whatever. As far as safety, you know, you heard from the other guy that the dust was affecting his horses. Said the dust, the noise pollution is a considerable factor, especially when you're, it's right there on top of the property. So my question is, is that there are zoning laws, regulations, why are they there? So I'm adamantly opposed to this because of the past, what it will do for the county. And you guys will have an overburden of people coming to you wanting to be rezoned. Thank you for your time.
Could you show me where Hamilton Road is in relation to this map?
It's up the road about a mile and a half on the right, right past.
Like on highway? On Highway twenty-four?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone else?
My name is Shannon Enman. I live at sixteen-thirty-six Highway twenty-four. Own the land right here on the front. It's sad that we here as family. And it's amazing how things can go south quick when the queen leaves. Grandma and granddaddy both hate to see our family divided. And to be straight up, nobody wants to see Donnie fail. I mean, Donnie's a good businessman. They've done great for theirself. And nobody wants to see my cousin Dana hurt. It hurts me to even stand up here. One thing I would like to clear up, though, is when my granddaddy, I was with my granddaddy when he bought that property. I moved out there with my grandma and granddaddy. All of us has grew up there. My granddaddy bought that property for the family to be there. He wanted everybody to succeed, but he put his business at the front of the, front of the lots. The land where we are at, and where Dana, Donnie, and all of us began, my house used to be where Dana's at. That was me and Uncle Billy was the first two houses back there, except for Cooper's, which is on the far right. That land was, granddaddy was gonna make a trailer park, mobile home park out of it, but the lot would not perk, so he changed it. So then it became family land. He gave it to our families. That's where it came from. Granddaddy, yeah, he wanted us to see us succeed, every one of us, different businesses and things we're doing. The only problem I have is the effect that this property is doing with Dana. The sad thing is Dana went to Donnie and asked him if he could have an alternative route. There is alternative route. Yes, it's gonna cost money, because Rousas Septu tank dug the back pit so close to the thirty-foot setback, that's gonna cave back. It's twenty, twenty-five foot deep probably, and it's gonna cave. But it can be done. Sad thing is that Dana goes to put her grandkids, her kids, these two lots here, wants to have the home for them, they're gonna be in the same situation as they are. So it's kind of like, takes away the family ordeal, and all of a sudden, this becomes a, a business. The, the whole family thing is just shot out the door, because nobody's gonna wanna live there. So the whole purpose that we say that was for homes and stuff is just shot out the door because it's, I'm not asking for Donnie to fail. There can be reasonable solutions to making the route of the, his trucks go by. I've sit there in my house and watched multiple ones go by, the noise, yes, and there's concrete piled up there right now, that I know he's gonna crush, and he's selling it. The bad thing is, he's saying he's landscaping, but it is becoming an industrial or more of a, a business like where you're selling heavy equipment and stuff, or materials, that's actually causing more and more stuff. He started as a small landscaper. He's grown, which is reasonable. Everybody's gonna grow, and hope they can grow and succeed. But the thing is, it's just gonna continue to get bigger and bigger. It's gonna cause more issues. I just ask you guys to be honest on your, and ladies, to be honest on your opinion and what your thoughts, processes, and how your voting is. I wish the best for everybody, and I just, it's sad that we're here as a family to discuss this, not just neighbors. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Anna Skinner. I live at two-oh-seven Hundred Grease Road. I'm a friend of Ms. Dana. I've been knowing her for twelve years or ten. And I'm here just to speak on her character. I know that they have portrayed her as being selfish and mean, but Ms. Dana, she's a special needs teacher. She's been working with school for the past fifteen years. So she has a heart of gold. And like the speaker before me has said, it is sad that the family has to come to this. I have visited Ms. Dana numerous times at her home, and it is crazy. It's like a person that works in a school system with special needs, it's not the best job, but if you have a heart to work with children, she has that heart. And she needs to be able to come home and relax and just like soak in her oasis. And right now, she doesn't have that. I've been at her home, and it is just crazy. So I just plead with you guys, and I've been praying over this equation, that you guys may come to a solution where both parties can just find a place where they can both be happy. But like she said, I hope that they do find a solution where if he is gonna get approved, he can do the other road, where it's not gonna go right through Ms. Dana, because it wouldn't, it would affect her greatly. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, I'm Casey Cook. I live at two-zero-three Lenora Street in Newport. I am a friend of Dana's. Dana has no opposition to land being used for work. That is not what this about, this is about, and to suggest that is dishonest. This would not be happening if the applicant would have made the changes that Dana requested before this issue was even brought to the county. She tried to meet with him before this issue was even brought to the county on numerous occasions, and was not treated with respect. The actual activities on the land are more industrial than landscaping. I've been out there numerous times. These industrial activities do not begin, did not begin until last year. It has not always been this way. Dana had no problem when it was a landscaping business, but the industrial-level activities started last year. There are ten trips a day past Dana's house of industrial dump trucks. There's beeping, dumping, and loading rock, crushing concrete. You heard, you heard it already. It wouldn't be right to run all those trucks by a six-year-old. But what if Dana has grandchildren? What if her kids want to live on the land that their grandfather, great-grandfather left them? Dana has real health issues that are truly threatened by this industrial-level activity. That's not a lie. This industrial-level activity started last year. Before that, there was no problem because it was just a landscaping business. Would you like an industrial site to just pop up across the street from your house with all that noise and all that dust? It is not appropriate to have an industrial-level business at the end of a dead-end road. The limited transition classification, which is what they're in in the future land use map, is intended predominantly for residential use. Some industrial healthcare institutional development does occur in those areas, but with the majority located along a major highway. This industrial-level activity is at the end of a dead-end road that runs right by her house. This will lead to major lawsuits and other residential residents in the future, residents who actually have money to sue the county. This has not been, the, the business has not been paying business property taxes all this time, because the rezoning was never asked for when the business began. Zoning Board, the zoning board approved, saying that there were a number of properties zoned industrial or business in this area. That is not the case. There are only two lots that are zoned either B-one or that, and the, the pit, which is IW. The pit is not an industrial activity. It is just a pit. There's no dump trucks running there every day. Within two square miles, there are no other, it's all residential. It's just all residential, except for those two lots. Everything out there is residential. This industrial-level activity is not consistent with the surrounding area. There are reasonable costs associated with doing business. That operation can afford getting access by a different route and moving the rock, so it's not making all that noise right by Dana's house. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Dr. Richard Skinner. I live in Maysville, North Carolina, actually Stella, North Carolina, but it's got the Maysville, because we're like five hundred feet from Jones County line. As a disaster response chap and, and the assistant manager of forty-eight hospice agencies to North Carolina and South Carolina, I speak against the rezoning. I know Ms. Dana for about ten years now, and she is a first responder dealing with special needs kids. If you ever, never worked with special needs kids, it takes a special person to work with them. And any first responder, and then our debriefing with police officers, firefighters, and other things like that, as a disaster response chap, and we always look at the facts. So let's look at the facts tonight. And I'm gonna, I tell my staff of my forty-eight hospice agencies that, let's look at facts. And if you got a problem, let's look at the problem, then give me a solution to the problem. So I'm gonna try to do that for you, for the short time I have. Is that okay? So let's look at the problems. One, he is violation of the law. The zoning board did you injustice by dropping this on your plate by not doing their homework. That was a very bad injustice. Donnie's been cited twice by the zoning board for violation of the law. On top of that, if Ms. Dana loses tonight, Ms. Dana has other options on her plate. And I highly recommend, my heart's sad. My heart's sad because I'm seeing two families being tore apart. The options that Ms. Dana has, one, she can appeal y'all's decision into the court system. That's gonna take some time, but she can appeal that decision. The other option she has, she can sue Donnie, his business, because she's gonna take a valuable loss. Her property value's gonna drop over thirty-three thousand dollars. Then she paid for surveys to be done, which she needs recruit from that. She's got lawyer fees. So Donnie's gonna wind up paying for money, one way or another. Because when she sues him, not only does she sue him, but she also has the right to apply all the zoning board planning commissioners to that lawsuit. And I'm not saying this to offend no one. Please don't take it that way. I'm just trying to lay facts out. She also can add y'all's name to that lawsuit. And I don't want the county lawyer to get involved with this, but we don't wanna get our taxpayers' monies tied up into court systems like this. So my solution to this whole problem is, Donnie's gonna have to pay money one way or another. Either he's gonna have to pay money to either move the road, and that's the problem that gonna happen, or he's gonna have to pay money to buy property somewhere else to move his business to try to solve this problem. That's, that would be the solution, to, to purchase a piece of property somewhere in the commercial area to, to move his business, to solve that problem. And it's really sad that we really come to this situation, where a situation's tearing two families completely apart. My heart, my heart breaks. My heart breaks for the families. My heart breaks for Ms. Dana, because as a, a deal with first responders, they need that area where they can unwind, they can recharge their batteries, and she cannot do that. You cannot do that next to industrial property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Is there anyone else? Anybody in the next room?
Any questions from the board?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
We're still gonna be able to ask questions of Ms., Ms. Tucker and. Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield to go out of public hearing, seconded by Commissioner Clark. All in favor? All right. Questions or comments from the board?
Matt, are there reasonable, um, way this can be worked at, you know, I'm talking about as far as the properties I'm in, but I realize what's going on. We've got families just busted all to pieces here for, for situation. And are there any other roadways that can be in those areas?
So similar discussion was held during planning commission, and, and I understand the point you're trying to get to. Reasonable is in the eye of the beholder with it, though. So because Mr. Bryant already came with his application to limit or put conditions on the rezoning to try to give, you know, you all in the community comfort that there wouldn't be any else, any revision to those conditions would be up to the applicant, not necessarily up to us. So if he wanted to offer any other conditions about rerouting access or whatever, but, I mean, he would have to, just based on where the property is located, he would have to. he would have to get agreements from multiple property owners to do any other route.
Commissioner, more conditional use conditions, as Matt is saying, have to be approved in writing by the applicant, and then they apply to the land. So it's not something that we can just have a negotiation in the middle of a board of commissioners meeting and add to it.
What about, uh, I guess that's the south side of the pit? If you come down Pete Road and what if you turned left and went on that side of the pit? It looks like there's a road already there going up to the property in the red box, like coming along there. Well, the people in the back, that's somebody else's land also, correct? We can't require a man to go against, go across a piece of property that he don't own. So.
I'll say halfway that pond.
Right.
To the highway, that's Shannon.
Okay, is that a viable option to come in on this, on the highway twenty-four side of the pond and going around to Donnie's house, and which would eliminate the traffic on Pete Road? I'm assuming Pete Road goes up and makes a left?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, Pete Road falls.
Right here. Right. So if you come down Pete Road and take a left and go in front of the pond and go that way, it, I mean, it looks like there's nothing there. It looks like there's a road there. Is that? Is that an option or not an option? Not an option.
They can go behind that and go down to the pit, the new pit that got, comes to the same problem.
Can I talk about how many I'm gonna give to my property?
We're out, we're out of public, brother.
Well, I would defer to the applicant to answer any other.
Sure, sure. I got a lot of questions, and I want somebody to be able to answer them, so.
The applicant calls.
Call the Donnie question.
Yeah.
Donnie, come on up, and I got some questions of Ms. Tucker. Uh, she had some additional things she'd like to see done, so. So you can't go on this side of the pit. What about on the back side? Can we bring that drawing down a little bit so we can?
You, you request this?
Yes. That looks like the simplest.
That is the road.
Yeah.
Shannon owns the better part of that. I guess if Shannon says it's okay, we can go in and out that way.
Okay, but it looks like you own part of it in the left-hand corner.
I own a little bit of that road to there.
Okay.
If we filled in this whole pit, that may be realistic. That, that's not mine. That's not my decision. Uh, it probably is possible. My dream, and I, I speak with this lady as frequent as possible, is to get this land that goes all the way to highway twenty-four. I'm trying my best. I, I don't want to bother anybody in the neighborhood. That is to, to be honest, that is my most realistic solution to the problem, that, the, the access to my property. That gives me access, don't, I don't bother anybody, going there all the way to twenty-four. That, that, that's the most realistic option, but still, I'm, I'm having, I would have to rely on the, the owner to sell to.
Okay.
No, 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 there's no response back. It's, it's our, our questions to him. We, we're only the dollar between the board now. Mr. Bryant, will you answer a question for me? So, to the, the northwest of your core of the property, the outside of red line right by your finger, that's southeast industrial, correct? So I mean, there is another industrial piece of property there other than that pit.
At the planning meeting, they had a map up with the zoning. That, that would be excellent, um.
It's B, it's B one.
Yeah, it's B one.
So there, there are other properties surrounding there that are zoned in that similar classification. Cause you're, you're requesting B one.
I touched both.
You're requesting B one conditional, if I read in the packet correctly.
Yeah, yeah, just whatever I need to remain a landscaper.
Just wanna make sure I understood. I heard something earlier and it was conflicting with that.
All right.
He's gonna ask you some questions in a minute. You can interject, but not, not out of the audience.
All right, stand by, Donnie. Ms. Tucker, what were, you mentioned that you had some extra provisions that you would like to see imposed. Could you repeat those for me?
Yeah, actually, I forget the microphone.
Well, the main one was um an alternate route. Um, I do wanna point out, that is B one, but that is accessed by a main highway head road.
I, I am, and I'm, I'm responding to your last speaker who's throwing out legal allegations that that's only B one, and he's talking about spot zone.
Okay.
So that would not be consistent with spot zone.
Um, and then the second one was um for him to move his piles of rock here where the loading and unloading go on um to more of the center or over here near the woods where, you know, it's not gonna impact residential um areas. And then um, I mean, I've got it written out. I can read them again if you'd like, but materials kept on the property should be only for his landscaping jobs, not stockpiled or sold to other landscapers or the public. Um, once that happens, it turns into a supply yard. I had noted over fifteen businesses coming past my home. So it wasn't just Donnie's traffic that was bothersome. That was the traffic getting to his home. And then deliveries, um eight to six Monday through Saturday, and then limit truck sizes um to no more than six axles. He's cutting grass this summer and looked up and an eighteen-wheeler was right there. Um, and then a six-foot privacy fence in addition to a fifteen-foot vegetative buffer, and then five-foot tall trees at planting. And then signage to the new access, and then time being the priority, completed within one, one hundred and twenty days. And I'm happy to give this to whoever.
Yeah.
Mr. Bryant, I see here on the map, uh, the colorized map, that there already is a vegetative screen proposed. It's hand-drawn. Uh, and that is gonna be ten foot off the property line. Can you give us a description of what that might look like?
Yeah, I, I told Dana before I was notified this. I'll, I'll move, you know, I'm gonna move the rock. I'm gonna have to move the rock. I applied that to her out. I, we've had three very civilized conversations. Um, so yes, the rock could move. And, and I seen her point. I didn't consider it. Keep in mind, I lost thirty feet of what I thought was mine. It was not. So if it was there now, it was thirty or forty foot off the line, but we didn't know where the line was. Um, but the screen, I've, I've got the plants. If I have them in, in my possession, they're about four and a half foot tall for this most sensitive area.
Mm-hmm.
I'm putting, I've got the dirt there now. I've been kinda waiting to see what y'all are gonna make me do. There's been some equipment there because I'm prepping to move. The bins are empty. They're moving.
Uh, about how wide would that vegetative screen be?
Um, at maturity?
At maturity. Well, my, my next question's gonna be height at maturity.
Okay, that, uh, twenty, they're Oakland Hollis. Got them last week. They watch her out at twenty foot tall. And then they're, um, I think they get about eight to twelve foot wide.
Thank you.
That, that was spacing them about five, four to five foot apart.
Um, how do I say something again?
You, you don't unless we call on you.
Okay, well, it was regarding the paper that I just handed.
What's that?
It was regarding what I just handed.
Some of the conditions you were just asking about.
Conditions.
All right.
I'll, I'll ask you to come back up. Tell, tell me what you want to tell.
Um, I don't have my paper now, but um the first one, thank you. I did want to know, I mean, I do appreciate y'all asking about how we can make this better. Um, if we could go back to that well, and we may not need to, but for me, first and most critically is the new easement. Like you can what it, like you can put makeup on a pig, it's still a pig. I mean, those trucks going back and forth between my parcels. Sorry. Of land is just too much. It's just got, he has overrun the space. It's just not the place for it, and I'm sorry. So, I mean, I wished him well. I've told him that a million times. Just, can you just go just behind or I mean, you got on that dirt and that, you own that equipment and backhoes and you own stuff to make roads, you know, but that's what our family does. Like, can you please just move behind my home? And I hear about the six-year-old, but it goes there anyway. Um, I'm just trying to fight for my family's heritage so they can grow up there. And not just one, just I mean, I'm glad that he's done well. It's, and I've told him a million times, it's not personal. I mean, I love him. I'm mad that I love him. I love all of them, but it's just the land was for our family to live there. And I'm not able to do that peacefully any longer. Thank you, sorry.
Unfortunately, we can't require a man to go across somebody else's property.
But you can require him to follow the law, and if someone were coming to apply right now for what is there, I cannot in my heart believe that would be approved.
That's why it's a conditional use, putting a lot of conditions on it.
What are the laws for? I would ask, what are the laws for? Cause he did it with.
She doesn't get to ask the board of commissioners questions.
So it, it's, it's an ordinance. It's not a law though, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Clarification. Just wanna make sure I understand it correctly.
Well, an ordinance is a local law, but I have no idea. I've seen, I don't know what we're talking about with any ordinance that's been broken, so.
So I'm, I'm new to this, and I have been studying it since it's been potentially coming to the board. So I just wanna get some things out and ask you a question, actually. Um, I'm really sorry that we're having to get involved in a family issue. And I've been in the area since nineteen eighty, and I've known the Rouse property coming back and forth from Emerald Isle to Morehead City to go to high school. So I clearly know enough to be dangerous about the Rouse and, and the family. I really want to see this come to a win-win if at all possible because I do side on the side of business. I am glad that we have business in Carterick County. I am glad that you're employing people here. And I know, I know the landscape business and I could there's plenty of business to go around. My question to you is, is it true that you've probably expanded your offerings as a landscape business in the last year to exceed beyond what a normal landscaping business is or is expected to be? And without ruling against you and telling you, you have to take your business somewhere else, is there a way that you could take a few steps back and consider limiting the extent of your business if it has had mission creep, using my Marine Corps background, mission creep? Because things are going well, things are going well, things are going well, and then you've just added this extra offering or extra thing in your business that maybe you could reconsider and maybe back off and become possibly compliant again. So that, you're not never gonna be compliant because it's residential and you're running a business. But if we people have said in this room that maybe things have accelerated in last year. So give me your feelings about maybe the extent of your business on the property.
We do a lot of different things, probably unlike some landscapers. I, we, you know, we, we do have some bulk concrete that gets cross, we, we have two small dump trucks and two, two big, bigger dump trucks, not eighteen-wheelers. Um, I'm trying to really zone in on your question.
Are you doing more than a landscape company?
I'm not doing, um we're, we're a unique landscaper. I mean, there's others like me. I mean, um.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I needed to hear. Thank you.
Anyone else? Matt, can you take the mic? What are the conditions that are placed uh going from B or residential, was it R fifteen, to B one conditional use?
So the conditions that are offered by the applicant are operation of a landscape business, contractor's storage yard to support the landscaping business, and office space to support the landscaping business.
So, excuse me. In those conditions, Mr. Bryant just indicated what he was planning for a buffer. I don't recall what sort of trees, vegetation.
Yeah, it's a buffer.
Is that, or are they spelled out in those conditions?
It doesn't need to be part of the conditions because that's part of our normal code, that anytime a business-owned property is next to a residentially-zoned property, a buffer is required.
Okay. Thank you.
Zoning's gonna require that as part of his
Yes, sir.
To conduct business there.
Yes, sir.
What was that saying? That he gotta be on?
Ma'am, you can't speak.
That's what I was getting at. I wanted you to say, do you have those right in front of you, what those conditions are? A so-many-foot vegetative buffer or a six-foot fence or both?
So, the, the buffer is not technically one of the conditions because it is already part of the code. The buffer allows the planning department to have a little bit of flexibility, so the general goal is kind of what Mr. Bryant already described. You want your tall evergreens and your short evergreens so that it, at growth, blocks visibility and ideally noise through it all. It gives the planning department some flexibility because sites are different. So there's some cases where the type of vegetation may need to be an evergreen grass versus a tree versus some other stuff. So it's something that's worked out during the site plan process. But they don't, he doesn't technically need to offer it as a condition because it's already gonna be required if the zoning is approved.
Okay. Any questions from anyone else?
I'd just like to make another comment just because of some comments that have been made in the public comment tonight. So, this, this is not unprecedented. The property down um next to the subdivision that goes in by the Waves Convenience Store, Coastal Equipment, came back, and there was a residential lot on the corner there that was converted to B one conditional use. Across the street from there, there is a lot that was converted to boat storage with conditional use with other conditions on it, next to the IGA. At some point in time way prior to that, when the Christian bookstore, I mean, the florist business, the Christian bookstore was sold, people went across the street, bought a lot, and build a building, and it's commercial, it operates there. And then there's a coin business between Mr. Rouse's property there on twenty-four also. So there are commercial properties in there operating businesses within residential neighborhoods. Um, just for the record, based meaning we're getting threats about being sued.
Yeah, I don't like threats. Uh, I'm gonna make a comment, pick up several comments, and then I'm gonna call for the vote. So has everybody got their questions in?
I got one more, just a quick comment. So
Go right ahead.
In the, in the zoning, what does IW stand for?
Uh, industrial and warehouse.
Okay, so this is just a point of clarification as well.
For.
Don't recall who, but one of the speakers mentioned, uh, and it's probably relevant, but mentioned that there's no industrial around this area. Well, clearly there is. Those two in the, in the pit there, the uh, Mr. Rouse's property, is that not, is that not industrial zoning?
That is industrial zoning, yes, sir.
Okay, I was just, just a point of clarification. So there is industrial zoning against that property. I just probably irrelevant, but just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
Okay. What year did Mr. Rouse start that business? About?
About nineteen seventy.
Nineteen seventy. Okay. And about nineteen eighty-five, the county zoned highway twenty-four, according to my research. And there was three types of zoning. Residential. And there was three types of zoning, residential, residential business, and business. Probably whoever zoned this, just, there was a lot of sporadic business out there, a lot of nothing in between the businesses and the homes back in that era. It probably should've been zoned residential business, cause Mr. Rouse was operating a septic tank business and dirt hauling business. I feel like that's pretty accurate. So, maybe it was the county, whoever was in charge of zoning at the time, maybe didn't get it in the right class. If they had of, you probably wouldn't be here tonight. Uh, the Rouse family, excellent family, the Lewis family, excellent family, nobody needs to be, uh, talked about people's character or, uh, we know both sides are of impeccable character. But the, the Rouse family's been operating a business, septic tank, hauling dirt, uh, land clearing business for as long as I can remember. And I equate it to something like a farmer. A farmer usually has his house here and his barns behind him and his equipment and his fields and all that. And I don't know what that lady's name was, the white-headed lady that was out in Rouse's mama's name, that used to cook in that garage. Dever? I don't know what she would say if she was here, but she used to have some really good smelling food on, about, when I would stop in there and deliver tars to Outon Rouse and Billy Rouse and back in the day. Uh, if she was here, it probably would not be going on, but in my opinion, it's been, uh, people's had houses there, they've had their businesses there, and they've all got along good, and I don't know what, what, uh, made it go sideways within the family. But, uh, we, we cannot instruct him to go across somebody else's property. What we, what we're tasked with tonight is try to get him in compliance as best we can, kind of an after-the-fact thing. Uh, that's why it's a conditional use, and we're placing all these conditions on him. He can't operate a nightclub there, he can't operate all those businesses that are seen as unfit. So, it's, it's zeroed in on a conditional use, and that's, that's the best the county can do when they come across, uh, situations like this. Just like the gentleman, uh, mentioned about Stargazer Lane. That gentleman was brought before the planning board and this board, and he was directed to go back, and that case is still in the process of being a conditional use. Once he found out, he was out of compliance. So, that's where we're at. So, there's a lot of things that were spoken about tonight that we don't have control over. What we do have control over is this particular piece of property. So, without further to do, if anyone has anything else to say, will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve the proposal to subdivide a parcel into two tracts. Track one, two-point-six-zero-one acres to remain R-15 M. Track two, three-point-five-five-six acres to be rezoned from R-15 M to B-one CZ general business conditional zoning.
Motion by Commissioner Clark. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Sheen. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Zoning's approved. Matt, is there a motion to read a plan and consistency statement?
Sure.
Motion by Commissioner Quinn, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Clark. Matt, would you read that statement?
Yes, sir, so, as proposed by the planning commission, it is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Cayman Lane Use Plan because it is consistent with the surrounding properties and uses, and it is reasonable and in the public interest because there's a history of mixture of homes and businesses in operation in the area.
Thank you, Matt. We have, we need to vote on that, all in favor of plan and consistency? All right, thank you, Matt.
My pleasure, sir.
Next is a manager's report. Madam Manager.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. I'll try to move along quickly since we've been here for a little bit. Um, early voting is now underway for residents living in municipalities. We have three locations, the Board of Elections in Beaufort, Fort Benjamin Park in Newport, and Western Park in Cedar Point. And these are open eight AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, and eight AM, three PM on Saturday, November first, and Election Day is November fourth. We would like to thank all of our election staff and our precinct officials for their hard work. In addition, we're very happy to announce that at the North Carolina Public Health Association Conference, we're very pleased that our Carteret County Health Department was named the North Carolina Health Department of the Year, and we will be recognizing staff at our next meeting. Um, this is to recognize them for their hard work and protecting the public, and in the leadership in overdose prevention. We have prevented, um, or had a reduction of sixty-nine percent in overdoses over the last two years, which is really amazing. And we congratulate Dr. Williams, Nina Oliver, Jesse Dale, Brook Lane, and the entire staff at the Health Department. Um, and finally, just a couple of dates. Our next Coastal Coalition Meeting's coming up November fifth. Saturday, November eighth, is our wonderful Veterans Day Parade in downtown Moorhead City at eleven o'clock AM. And November eleventh, county offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. And we do thank all of our veterans for their service, and that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the agenda is board appointments. The first one is the Consolidated Human Services Board, Mr. Scott Cobb, reappointment to a four-year term. All in favor of Mr. Cobb? Next one is the Marine Fisheries Advisory Board, Mr. Jess Hawkins, reappointment to a three-year term. All in favor of Mr. Hawkins?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add on the, for the Peer Recovery Center Board, the seat is vacant, they nominate Mr. Tristan Thomas.
Excellent, all in favor of Mr. Thomas for the Peer Recovery Board? All eyes have it. Next is Commissioner Comment. Commissioner Waldorf, we'll start with you.
Thank everybody for coming, appreciate everybody, uh, having a say, having a voice. This was a hard one. Kinda sucked the life out of me, so, hard decision, that's why we get paid no bucks to be up here to, to hear the, to hear what's right here in our county. Happy Veterans Day to all our veterans, uh, I being one of them. But if you can get out to the parade on the eighth of November, um, it was a real happy event last year. And, uh, happy Halloween, and I appreciate that. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Waldorf, Commissioner Moore.
Hi, too, uh, when it come to the night, uh, this was a hard one. And, uh, it comes to seeing two families, uh, torn between like they, they are, it's just sad. And, um, not double come up to a solution of whatever, and puts the situation on us. And, uh, it was just hard. And, uh, of course, we have our, our planning boards and everybody in place to get us where we're at. And when they come in and approve everything, uh, you know, it kind of puts the situation, what have we got the planning boards for? If we don't follow those, and that's kind of where I was at with, with this. But, uh, I just hope that somewhere that these families can, can get things straight and, uh, pull this together. And, and, uh, there's a lot, you know, a lot could be done and, and help that when it comes to this situation, to get these families back straight for this. Halloween's coming up, I just ask everyone for their safety, be careful with the kids when they're out on the streets, make sure they're visible and, uh, and taken care of, keep your eyes on them. Uh, that's it, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, just to echo my previous two commissioners' comments, this is the hardest part of this job. It's not just governance, it's when families are involved, it makes it a very difficult decision, and, and not everybody's gonna leave happy. And that's, and that's an unfortunate situation, and again, I, I hope the best for both of these families that are involved. Like, uh, our manager said, congratulations to the Health Department for being named the Health Department of the Year by the North Carolina Public Health Association. Um, I'm wearing pink tonight in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It's a, it's a time to raise awareness about this horrible disease and the people that are affected by it on a daily basis, to support those who are affected, and to promote early detection through regular screenings and through education. Um, and then also with our municipal elections coming up November fourth, please go out and vote. This is a off-cycle, you know, there's no national ticket, no national votes on the ballot. Turnout is horribly low, usually around twenty percent. Twenty percent of the eligible voters come out for these off-year, twenty-twenty-five, in this case, municipal elections. And so, take this into regard, turnout's low, so that means your vote counts more. Your vote's gonna carry more weight. So, getting out and voting is gonna not just strengthen the health of our democracy, but it also ensures that our community's priorities are represented. Uh, and I'm gonna close, uh, by mentioning that Atlantic Beach today proclaimed, uh, October twentieth as Stevie Levy Day. And, uh, that is today in honor of Stevie, he's not doing well. I'm not sure about how many other board members know, he's in the hospital. He's the original Uber, uh, is Stevie Levy, and, uh, I've ridden many a mile with him, and I suspect some of y'all here have too, probably scared to death when you're riding with him.
I thought he was gonna run me to death.
But it's must- Come on, boss man.
He's trying to play with the radio.
He's a self-proclaimed dancing fool, Stevie Levy Shuffle, if you've never heard it, was written in his honor by several of, uh, our local beach music bands. He was a fixture here in our county for many, many years, lived next door to my grandma for over twenty years, a heart of gold. And, uh, so, I'll, I'll just say, Shama Lama Steamboat. Shama Lama Showboat, Stevie Levy.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Quinn, Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Chairman, in the interest of brevity and for everyone's time, I will defer my speech until next time.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I'll be brief as well. Um, I appreciate all the statements and the comments and, uh, the, uh, that were made this evening, and it, and it's, it is a hard decision to make, and you're not gonna always make everybody happy. Somebody's be mad, somebody's be happy. But I feel like, uh, uh, in the grand scheme, I think we did the right thing. You only have so many, so many real items that you can weigh when you make these decisions. So, I think we, we, we focused on that and made the decisions we had to. So, uh, congratulations to the Health Department's state-level award, right? Yes, so, they're doing a great job over there, a lot of hard-working individuals. Uh, I know I, I pay a lot of attention to the, uh, the opium, opioid program over there quite a bit. And, uh, so, congratulations to them. Uh, as the other commissioners have mentioned, uh, early voting is going on. Um, please, please, please get out, if you live in a municipality, if you live, if you pay city taxes, you can vote this time. Any municipality, you can pay that, you can vote. So, please get out and, and exercise your, your right, uh, and your duty to do that. One other note on that, on Election Day, if you live in Newport One, you would typically go to Saint James to vote. That's not gonna be open this year, your voting will remain at Fort Benjamin, the Wildwood, uh, voting precinct. So, uh, a lot of people, it never, never fails, there's a lot of confusion, uh, on, on, on Voting Day. We get people in Newport that come from the Wildwood precinct or come from God knows where, but they're, you know, they, they get confused, so anyway.
Time's up, bro.
I'm done. I'm here. I'm the only one that gets to beat during these meetings.
I swear I didn't pay her.
And Will, one last thing, quick, uh, uh, I hope everyone has a safe, and, safe holiday, uh, uh, pardon?
Halloween?
Halloween, yeah, that's what I was going with, that's your alarm. But if you want to make sure you have a safe Halloween, come to Newport, go to the Hoot and Nanny, it's all in the ball field, it's safe, everything's free, food, drinks, games, bring the kids, every, it's well-attended, they'll have a great time, that's all I got, I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheen, Vice Chairman Mansfield.
I was calling on the last meeting, I'm gonna follow my, uh, Commissioner Clark and-
Are you feeling all right? All right, well, that's unusual, you didn't have anything to say, but, uh, I'll be brief. Certainly, it was tough tonight, and I know the Rouse family and the Bryant family and the Tucker family, all great folks, and, uh, was hoping there'd be an alternative route, uh, but we can't force somebody to go against somebody, go across somebody else's property. And there's a letter of the law and there's a spirit of the law, and that property was developed in the spirit of the law, everybody working in the dirt business and septic tank business, and I think the elder Rouses would want that to continue. Uh, Veterans Day, we have our two veterans here on the board, Colonel Mary Ann Waldorf. Were you, were you a private, private, uh, private clerk, Corporal Clark, thank you for your service, dedication to our country. As, uh, the others mentioned, Halloween's coming up, everybody be safe, and Commissioner Quinn mentioned about Stevie Levy. I paid him to pick me up way down east, uh, in sea level, headed to Moorhead to a function, and about Ralph Thomas's farm there, he was trying to adjust the radio and trying to steer, I said, hold on, man, I said, I'll get the radio, you just hold the wheel, keep her, keep her between the lines there.
I mean, he didn't play his cassette tape.
And he was, he was, he's got a stuttering, and to say something, he was trying to get a different song, but, uh, Stevie's a great guy and always jolly whenever you saw him, uh, anywhere in town. And, uh, certainly our prayers are with him as his health is not, not the best in the world, so. If there's nothing else to come before the board tonight, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Clark, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all for coming.